Good evening. I'd like to call the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 to order. Please, if you're not standing, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Council President. Rob Getzloff, present. Councilwoman Robyn Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hanson.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Thiel. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel here.
Thank you. The Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilwoman Robyn Arvenitis, and Councilman Kevin Conley at this time, Councilman Tom Schmidt, and Councilman Caleb Johnson will be taken off of this roll call. Minutes of the February 8th, 2023 public meeting. Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President. One additional claim, which would be item J on this agenda, is for Fidelity National Title Company. It's for $375 for search and exam fee for Outlet B on Pershing Road in Autumn Creek.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Any reports, Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
Any reports for council members?
No, sir.
Okay. There is no old business under new business. Consider acceptance of letter of engagement with London Witty Group related to the monthly compilation of the Town of Sheriville Water Fund financial statements. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a yearly engagement we have with our financial advisors, London Witty, and they provide monthly financial reports for our water utilities.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Moved to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. At this time, we'll take any business from the floor regarding Water Works. Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move into redevelopment. Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. The time is 7:04 PM. For the redevelopment, it consists of the entire council, so we'll add Councilman Caleb Johnson and Tom Schmidt to the roll call, and our advisor from Lake Central, Nicole Kelly. Hello, Nicole. Minutes of the February 8th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It's a quiet five zero. All right, claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Uh, no additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good job on that one. Reports, any reports from staff?
No reports.
Okay. Council members, any redevelopment reports?
No report.
Okay. We don't have any old business, nor do we have any new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting at 7:05 PM. The roll call remains the same as the Redevelopment Commission. First on the agenda are the minutes of the February 8th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims for the Utility Board?
No additional claims, Mrs. President.
Thank you.
So move on claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any reports from the staff?
No reports.
Any reports from the council members regarding the Utility Board?
No report.
No reports.
Thank you.
Actually, Madam President, I did have the opportunity to take a lovely tour of the water sewage treatment plants with our town manager, and it's an interesting process, and we've been talking back and forth for a long time about the, I don't know the name of the building that needs to be replaced. I got the firsthand look at the building that needs to be replaced, and it's a real mess, that's for sure. So we need to.
Needs to be replaced.
Yeah, we need to move that along, replacing it, so. Thank you for the tour, and as things come up, I'll continue to report as liaison.
Thank you for the report. There is no old business. We do have new business. Item A, consider acceptance of letter of engagement with London Witty Group related to the monthly compilation of the Town of Sheriville Sewer Funds financial statements.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, March 8th at approximately 7:08 PM. The roll call for the Town Council meeting stays the same as the Utility Board. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the February 8th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel for the Town Council?
Yes, Council President. This would be item U, and it's the same thing we had on the wastewater claims, which is the Fidelity National Title Company invoice for $375 for the same description I reported earlier.
Thank you.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Reports. Any reports? Mr. Patterson, we'll start with you on the left.
All right, just want to report for the month of February that the fire department responded at 259 EMS-related calls, 52 fire-related calls, for a total of 311 calls for the month of February. That's all I got.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Dave Meyer.
Nothing to report.
Chief Sormas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to report yesterday at around the clock here on US 30 and 41, we had our first 2023 Coffee with the Cop, and it was, went off to a good event, started off the year real nice with getting the community out there. I'd like to thank Around the Clock for hosting that for us this year, and all the council members and staff members that showed up and supported the police department with Coffee with the Cop. Thank you, and then we'll keep you posted for our next one.
Thank you, Chief Sormas. Deputy Chief McNamara?
No reports.
Our park superintendent, John Novosich?
Nothing to report.
Our operation manager, Annie Hanson?
No reports.
Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
Council members?
No report.
No reports?
No reports.
Okay, and we'll move right along. At this time, we'll open public comments regarding any agenda items. Is there any public comments regarding any agenda items? Please step up and name and address.
Joe Connesek, President, Sheriff of Professional Firefighter Association, 7661 Morton Street, Maraville, Indiana. This is reference item I, which is the Safer Grant, which is on the agenda for this evening. I'd like to start off by reading a list of names. Captain Paramedic Nick Finelli, Valparaiso Fire. Firefighter EMT Dan Michaels, Hammond Fire. Firefighter Paramedic John Lucak, Crown Point Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Colin Hubbard, Valparaiso Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Tyler Brown, Portage Fire. Lieutenant Paramedic Jason Oxford, Valparaiso Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Alex Beligio, Hammond Fire. Lieutenant Paramedic Dan Vassilak, South Hallam Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Mike Drack, Portage Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Allison Semethy, St. John Fire. Firefighter Paramedic John Rosenfeld. Firefighter Paramedic Jeremy Golick, Crown Point Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Eric Newell. Firefighter Paramedic Bryce Sapinski, Hammond Fire. Firefighter Paramedic Megan Tolle. Firefighter Paramedic Mike Cummins. And soon to be added to this list, Firefighter Paramedic Alec Pruskowski. It's a lot of names. Most of them left because they were tired of working every day at a minimum staffing levels and seeing no concern from this town council to take action to change that. It's an undisputable fact. This town council has sat here year after year as Town of Sheriville has grown and the volume of calls of service that the Sheriville Fire Department responds to has increased, and nothing has been done maybe the bare minimum of the best. 2012, we had 13 full-time platoon firefighters that responded to 2,848 calls for service, with five firefighters on duty. The Sheriville Fire Department now has 18 full-time platoon firefighters on duty. Sheriville Fire Department now has 18 full-time platoon firefighters that responded to 4,001 calls for service in 2022. That's a 29% increase in call volume. We only have a minimum staffing requirement of six firefighters on duty, now spread out between three firehouses. That's two firefighters at each station. Nearly 70% of the time, we are at a minimum staffing level. Tell me if any of that sounds safe for the Town of Sheriville or the firefighters that are supposed to be responding to the emergency. Currently, they just responded to a structure fire with six personnel on duty. The current staffing model of the Sheriville Fire Department is to have nine firefighters on duty. This is accomplished with three firefighters at Station 1 staffing a paramedic engine, four firefighter fires at Station 2 staffing a ladder truck with two firefighters, a paramedic ambulance with two firefighters. Two firefighters would be at Station 3 staffing either an engine or a paramedic ambulance as needed. Yet most days, Station 1 has a paramedic engine with two or three firefighters, Station 2 has a paramedic ambulance with two firefighters, and Station 3 has a paramedic ambulance with two firefighters if it happens to be staffed. What we should have on duty is no less than four firefighters at each firehouse. When compared to neighboring fire departments, our firefighters are doing considerably more with less. We're running double the calls with a similar number of firefighters, or we're running a similar number of calls with more than twice as many firefighters on duty. Not that long ago, the fire department was down to only seven paramedics. Five of them were officers. Who's running the shift if they're out on paramedic calls 12 times a day? Over the last two years, we hired nine firefighters to make up for what we had lost. The union has asked us to sit down with you and work on making positive changes for the fire department numerous times. We sat down last year once again, and we warned you if things did not change and positive changes didn't come to the department regarding staffing and for our members, we'd be looking at another staffing crisis. Well, here we are. It started. The first of our new hires has put in his two-week notice already, and he's made it clear he was disappointed with the town's failure to attend to the fire department's needs and feels where he's going is established, and his job is more protected there. So once again, we've brought a solution to this problem using a federal emergency management agency staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, the Safer Grant. This is through the Assistance Firefighters Grant Program, and it could potentially hire three to six new full-time firefighters for the department. I can sit here and bore you with a bunch of numbers and statistics regarding NFPA 1710, which is the standard for organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, EMS, and special operations in career fire departments. But it is my understanding that you've all received a copy of the letter we provided regarding why we need to follow through with applying, if awarded, accepting, and hiring three new full-time firefighters through the FEMA Safer Grant. So if that's not enough for you, I'm going to throw this out to you, the OSHA two-in-two-out rule. Simply put, this rule says that no more than two firefighters can operate inside a burning building unless there are two other firefighters outside that building dressed and ready to go. If we only have six firefighters on duty, two are on ambulance calls because we have an average of 10 of those a day, one has to sit there and operate the fire engine. That leaves three firefighters left. Who's going to be going there and put the fire out? Who's there to rescue them if something goes bad? Who's there to help the victims after they get pulled out? How are we supposed to safely operate on the fire ground? What are we supposed to do if there's multiple calls going on and there's only two firefighters left? This is a daily occurrence, where we are down to two firefighters sometimes in the Town of Sheriville. The truth is, three full-time firefighters is not enough. A part-time program has been failing for years. Every month, over 100 shifts that don't get filled, and our members have been forced to work overtime to meet minimum staffing requirements because of this. Even with the excessive amount of money spent on part-time salaries last year, we still spent a record amount of money on overtime to meet our minimum staffing needs. The reality is, we need to file this grant for six full-time firefighters. You want to know how to pay for these salaries? Here it is. It's 36 months of 100% salary and benefits paid for by the federal government. These salaries are sustainable. The reality is, our part-time firefighters are not fulfilling the needs of this department. At the end of the grant period, if appropriations haven't increased enough to support these salaries, we could probably share these costs out of some of that part-time money. As firefighters, we have responsibility to do our best to keep the people at Town of Sheriville safe. As the union, we have responsibility to do our best to keep our members safe as they do that job. As a town council, your job is to make sure that the Sheriville Fire Department is properly funded and staffed so that it can carry out its mission in keeping the people of the Town of Sheriville safe. That being said, our only question to you is, do you think you've been doing a good job of that? We'll be looking forward to your answer this afternoon or this evening when you vote on the Safer Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connesek. Is there any other public comments regarding agenda items? Any public comments regarding agenda items? Please step up and state your name and address.
Kevin Dean, D as in David, E-A-N-E, 1905, Sir Richard Road. G, consider the approval of extended family. First Coronavirus Responder Act. You're talking about 10 days of paid leave for someone with coronavirus. My research quickly on the phone just showed that the CDC has changed their guidelines to five days. If you have not had temperature in the previous 24 hours, you can return with a mask.
Hold on, sir. Sir, can you get closer to the microphone? We can't, I can't comprehend what you're saying.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about G, the first responder Coronavirus Act here, response FF-CRA to May 1st of 2023. It's for 10 days. The CDC has changed their guidelines to five days. You can return to work with a mask after five days if you haven't had any temperature in the previous 24 hours. So I'm just wondering if, why we're staying at what was previously two years ago, a 10-day limit instead of going to five. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comments regarding agenda items? No more public comments regarding gen. We'll move into old business. We have no old business. We'll move into new business. First item is item A, is ordinance 1992, an ordinance amending the town ordinance number 1820, being an ordinance amending the schedule of towing and storage fees to be charged and collected for such services by the Sheriville Metropolitan Police Department. It's repealing all ordinances and town code sections or parts thereof in conflict herewith and all matters related heretoe. Repeating all ordinances and town code sections or parts thereof in conflict herewith and all matters related heretoe. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is an ordinance amending 1820 to increase the fees for towing and storage of vehicles that the police may need off the streets for whatever reason, an accident, impaired driver, arrest, whatever that case may be. The ordinance reads the same. The only thing that changed in it was the fees. We were having a hard time getting the towing companies come out because the other departments in, or the other municipalities in our area were charging more, and they didn't feel like they should come out and not be able to make, you know, cover their costs, basically. So Chief Sormas called around, and we kind of did the average and used those prices.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Mr. Sormas, do you have any comments on it?
Sorry. Town Manager Gorman summarized everything accurately.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance 1992.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is consider acceptance of the Northwest Indiana Symphony Orgisus contract for $12,000. The performance date is scheduled on July 22nd, 2023.
Moved to approve?
Second with discussion. Is this different, Mr. Troxel? Is this different than last year? Increase, decrease, same?
It's the same.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item C is consider approval to purchase property located at 445 Kennedy Avenue, Sheriville, Indiana, parcel 10, from Laura A. Filosa in the amount of $285,000, and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents. This property has to do with our Kennedy Avenue improvements. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is in Phase 1, which is the Trax project. This parcel is shown on the screen in purple at the very top of the screen. It's on the north side of the Trax, east side of Kennedy Avenue.
Mr. Gorman, we've already, we've already executed or agreed to execute the documents for the yellow properties and those, I don't know what color that is, orange?
Uh, yeah, they're still in process, but yeah, those have all been.
Those have been approved. So we needed that entire side over there.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we also need some on the, a little parcel, which you guys already approved, on the west side of, on, north of the Trax, on the west side, as well as there's three or four on the south side of the Trax, on both sides of the road as well.
Okay, so we're getting pretty close to having what we need for the Trax project.
Yeah, there's, I believe, 11 or 12? 11.
Very nice.
11 left, Jim?
11 just in Phase 1, yes. Not 11, 11 total, just in Phase 1.
And how many do we have?
Well, we have.
How many have we purchased, I mean?
Well, they're still in process. We're trying to, we're waiting on signatures, but we're close.
Okay, very good.
Since it's an NDOT project, now, now, once we approve it, then it's got to go back to NDOT, and they write the check.
Last question, Mr. President. Jim, is this amount, 285, is that consistent with the appraisal amount from NDOT's appraisals?
Uh, this is, they actually had their own appraisal. We had it appraised. They had their own appraisal done, and we met halfway, got in between the two for this one.
And this is what NDOT's approving, because they're paying for this, right, aren't they?
They are paying for this. Yep. We're, they're paying 80% of it. We're paying 20.
No other question, Mr. President? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item D is consider sale of rolled salt to the Town of Cedar Lake, Lake County, Indiana. Mr. Gorman, or Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, Cedar Lake reached out to us. They didn't purchase any salt this year, and since we've had a mild winter, our salt barn is very full. So they're requesting 400 tons, and we have it worked out with them to have it delivered directly to them. We would make no profit if we work out both, for both communities.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item E is consider variance of use to permit the relocation of an existing static 10 and 1/2 times 36 feet off-premise advertising structure to be relocated 600 feet to the east, placed at zero setback on side and front yards with an overall height of 48 feet. Border zoning appeals case number 23-2-2, location is 78 Sixth Berth Street, it's the first media care center on Methodist Hospital. The patricianer is Lamar Advertising Company, real estate manager Sean Pettit. It came with a favorable recommendation by BZA of 3O with conditions, subject to all federal, state, and local approvals, and subject to landscaping around the base of structure. And ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Pettit is in the audience if we have any questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Jim, do you want to give a report on that, please?
Yeah, this is, it's pretty self-explanatory. They currently have a, they currently have a static sign on the Future Subaru property, which is being constructed right now. They've already taken that down. They are moving it 600 feet to the east on Methodist property, and it's going to be the exact same sign that they just took down. Is that correct, Mr. Pettit?
That is correct. For the record, Mr. President, Town Council member Sean Pettit, real estate manager Lamar Advertising Offices at 9900 Georgia Street, Crown Point, Indiana. Be happy to answer any questions the council members may have.
No questions.
No questions.
Any questions for Sean?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Conditions?
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm going to abstain from voting, Tom.
Motion carries four with one abstain. Four all with one abstain. Thank you. Next item is item F, is consider request from the park board to allow beer and wine at the following events. The date's subject to change if rescheduled due to the weather. Friday, May 12th, party in the park at Reader Park. Friday, May 26th, party in the park, Reader Park. Wednesday, June 7th to Saturday, June 11th, celebrate Sherival Fest, Reader Park. Mr. Gorman? I would think that that would be till Sunday, right?
It is. That was a typo.
That's a typo?
Okay, yeah, I agree.
The June 11th is correct.
That's correct, yeah.
It's just Sunday.
Right. That's the Sherival Fest is from June 11, June 7th to June 11th. Friday, June 23rd, party in the park at Reader Park. Friday, June 30th, with a rain date of July 1st for the fireworks show at Roman Park. Friday, July 14th, party in the park at Reader Park. Friday, July 21st, party in the park, Reader Park. Saturday, July 22nd, the Northwest Indiana Symphony at Reader Park. Friday, July 28th, the Sherival Chamber Cornrows at Reader Park. Friday, August 11th, party in the park at Reader Park. And Friday, August 18th, party in the park at Reader Park. Friday, August 25th, Evening Under the Stars, Reader Park. And Saturday, September 16th, the county, the country affair at Reader Park.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Discussion, please.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, please. Chief Sormas, Deputy Chief McNamara, are we having any issues with excessive alcohol or problems arising from any of these events that we need to know of, that we need to be concerned about with approving these?
Uh, at this point, no. We haven't had any issues at the park. They're fully staffed. All the events, we've been working with John Novosich and his staff. We received the calendar early at the year, and we're able to adjust our schedules and assign officers to work out there on a. on a, on every event that they request us to work. So I don't see any issues with that right now. I can turn it over to Steve, see if he has anything.
No, same thing. We've worked with John on several occasions just to make sure we have it all prepared, you know, for the future for every event coming up, especially when there's alcohol in the affair.
Thank you, guys. Second question I have, and maybe this is a question for Attorney Austin. Do we have to approve this every time? Or are we able to grant this authority to the park board? Or, I mean, is this something that we've reserved to the council or we have the power to grant to them?
This is actually the first time I've seen an agenda item like this. It's been my understanding it's been handled at the park board level.
No, I think.
My recollection, at least. And the reason it's before you, if it is properly before you, is because you own the park.
We do it every year, don't we? You own the park.
Any other further comments?
Yes, Council President, Mr. Novosich. The town ordinance does not allow alcohol in the park and that's the reason why it's been brought up to the council since the council has the authority to waiver or change the ordinance. That's outside the park board's jurisdiction. So that's why the park board makes the recommendation. If the council wants to allow that, that does make sense because this has been an annual request for many years. So that would make sense to allow the park board to do it if it's something they would be able to do under Indiana Code.
Thank you, Jim.
That won't be an Indiana Code item. That'll be a town of Sherreville item.
So we could amend the town ordinance to grant the park board permission to allow alcohol at events that they deem worthy?
You could. Probably be a resolution versus an ordinance, but yes, you could.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other further comment? None? Need a motion?
We already have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion and we have a second.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item G is consider approval to extend the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, to May 11th, 2023. It currently due to expire on March 31st, 2023. This act compensates up to 80 hours paid leave to employees that are off work due to the COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Yeah, we currently have no employees off due to COVID. We just had one come back yesterday. I know our 9/11 dispatch center was hit pretty hard in the last couple of weeks. We've had eight people off for the month of January and February. We are aware that the CDC did change their policy. We did not follow that policy because part of that policy is coming back wearing a mask. That would kinda be a hard thing to police, in our opinion. And we are asking it to be extended only to the 11th of May. Due to the federal government, they're gonna suspend that emergency. So this will cover us from the end of this month to May 11th. And I do have to say also that there are very few employees that use the 80 hours because upon the onset of them becoming ill, that's when the clock starts. We include weekends. So it's 10 calendar days. It's not 10 paid days. So very few of them have used the 80 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Mr. President, do we, do we know other municipalities still using this? I mean, is this still a thing? I didn't even think this was a thing anymore.
People, I don't know if it's a thing with other municipalities, but our employees are still getting coronavirus.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item H is consider donation for the dollars for scholars. A request for $1,200 donation. Approved by the donation committee three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty self-explanatory. They applied for a donation request last year. It's the same amount and the donation committee approved it three-zero, which Mr. Troxel, myself, and Mr. Hanson are on that donation committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item A is consider authorization to submit, to submit an application for the fire department manpower SAFER Grant. Chief Patterson, can you just give us a brief explanation of it?
Speaking of the mic, please. SAFER Grant is out there to assist departments with improving staffing for their departments. The grant gives you a three-year term, full pay, and then you have to take over the payments for their salaries afterwards. That's what the grant is for.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, chief.
Mr. President? I move to authorize and approve the finishing and submission of the SAFER Grant application for the town fire department with two conditions. First, the submission is contingent upon the town having the significant funding, if awarded, to grant. And second, that the town staff review fire department rates and charges to provide a report to the town council on the same.
Rob, you said significant funding. Do you mean sufficient?
Sufficient. Did I say sufficient? I'm sorry, sufficient.
Just making sure I understood.
Yes.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that we can pay for these firefighters in years forward and going forward.
Yes.
My second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Would you take a roll call, Mr. Troxel?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Arvines?
Yes.
Mr. Katsloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. One question, Mr. Chief Patterson. How, how close are you, your department, on finishing the application?
Most of the narratives have been written and submitted for review by the grant committee that the town has established and waiting for turnbacks for any changes or things needed to be added.
And the deadline, I understand, is eight days from now on the 16th?
Yes.
And you'll have that in by then?
Should be if we get everybody to turn stuff back in so we can make sure we got everything covered.
And how do you submit that?
Actually, once it's completed, Mr. Troxel would be able to submit it. He has the authorization to do so.
From his office? Is that right, Mr.?
I'm the authorized submitter for these FEMA grants for the town of Sherreville.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next item is consider acceptance of donations of $15. Mr. Troxel, would you like to read that list?
Yes, I will, Council President. We, to our fire department, we received from Kim and Nicole Mluznik an in-kind contribution of a Duncan gift card of $15. And that is the total donations for the month of February.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. At this time, I'll open up the business from the floor. Any comments from business on the floor on any topic?
Joe Katsak, President, Sherreville Fire Fighters Association. I would like to thank the members of the council for passing the agenda item for the SAFER Grant. It is the first step in adding permanent full-time staffing to the fire department. It's something that we've been needing to do for quite a while. Hopefully, we'll see continued additional staffing in years to come. If we do get awarded this grant, we'll continue the progress. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conde. Any other comment from the floor? Any other comment from the floor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you and have a good night.